Alright, you guys ready? Oh, hang on, I've got an echo. Killing that, good, good, good. Now, now I don't hear myself, good. Okay, so... Hey there. So, uh, um, good, good to be with you. So this is, this is now Twitch stream number, I think, four for me, which I'm starting to get the, the hang of it. Brief flyby, and I saw somebody is taking their, their ICND1 exam, their CCNT exam tomorrow. So you are in the right place, and I will do as much as I can to try and help you, along with take a bajillion questions. So... How are we looking there? Good. So, um, my whole goal for this session, as, as the, the little title slide implied, CCNA before February. I know a lot of people are going after this. It's, their sights are set. You've got four months. Even if you haven't started at all, it's not too late. I would say, you know, start now. What I, what I've been doing is I've been doing a variety of different formats. Uh, in terms of, uh, I initially started by just doing some labs. I got a whole bunch of lab equipment over there. Um, and then I started doing just, um, topics that I would teach. And, and I think what actually landed well, although it's really uncomfortable for me, um, is, uh, the last format that I tried, which I called, uh, uh, ICND1 Grab Bag. And what I did was, uh, as many of you know, I, I do a lot of training for CBT Nuggets. And they actually, with their subscriptions, have a full free access to transcender practice exams that you can take a bajillion times. And I was like, hey, why not? So I, so I grabbed the website, I pulled up the practice exam, and then we just went question by question. Um, everybody would chat in their, their answers, what they think the, the question would be. Um, I'll talk more about that when we get there. Um, that went really well, because when people had questions, I was like, oh, well, let me explain and went through it. The reason I say it's uncomfortable is these questions are, are rough, and the format is rough. It doesn't tell you how many, uh, answers are correct. You can always check as many answers as you want. So it's kind of like, uh, you know, so, so at the same time, it's, but it's fun. We, it sparks a lot of good discussion. So, a couple callouts out there. Um, and one of the things I'm, I'm gonna try not to do, so, so just so you've got my bearings, uh, I'm, I'm right here talking to you, right? Um, over there is my video feed, so if I'm ever wanting to see the chat, I'm looking over here. Right here is my, my practice questions, which I'm gonna bring up in just a second, as our fact. Let me do that right now. There we go. Um, I'm gonna pick up right where we left off, so we don't do the same questions again, and we'll just keep going. Um, and, uh, it's, it's been good. Uh, so, uh, so if you see me looking over here, uh, okay, the thing that I'm not going to do is try to talk to the chat while doing the questions, while talking to you, because I end up like a schizophrenic freak, where I'm just like, ah, 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 ah! And, and, uh, so I'm, I'm learning the Twitch ways. Um, and, uh, and yeah, so, so a lot that I could say there. So, um, that being said, Flyball by Callout, Scuttlebutts, Halo, Halo Chicken, hello, I love these names, they're, they're awesome. Uh, EasilyCorey, Whizzles, uh, HKJohn, Hasn't missed a stream yet, uh, thanks guys. This, this is fun. I'm having a lot of fun with this. Um, and, but, one of the reasons, so, um, a lot of people have asked, why am I doing this? Um, primary reason is just to help people. Uh, that's, if, if you've, if you've ever taken my training, you know that I love this stuff, and I just, I like to help. So, so that's, that's my primary. The other reason is because I'm actually building the CCNA 2020, the new CCNA, right now for, um, uh, CBT Nuggets. And one of the things I like doing is, is seeing what people are struggling with. Helps me figure out, I should, I should teach that better, or I should, I should teach that a different way, or ooh, you know, uh, uh, back, uh, bactur-uh, you know, really asked a great question on POE, I should mention that. So, so I kind of take a lot of what you're asking, and I'm like, that's, that, I mean, you, you are helping me build, and we're building together, uh, the new CCNA offering that CBT Nuggets has. So this should be cool. Um, and you know what's funny? It's Scuttlebutts, and then I gotta stop, because otherwise we'll just, we'll just chat all day, although that would be a fun stream too. Um, said, uh, "I would livestream a lot more if you would just play video games and watch, watch me play video." So when I was logging into Twitch today, I was like, you know, I logged in, and of course they have like the, the streams that are just running, and I'm like, "This is really interesting." I, I used to be a gamer before I got married, and I kinda hung it up when, you know, or I should say my wife hung it up for me. And, um, uh, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just sitting, it's, it's fun. So, so I may end up back in the, uh, the gaming world. Um, do I have a, oh, uh, oh, I, so let me answer this now, because I get this question probably more than any. Do you have a planned date for the new CCNA? Um, so, I give you my stock answer for that, uh, which is, don't go after the new CCNA. Get the CCNA that's there right now, um, because it's gonna be easier. It's gonna be, you know, like, now, now's the time, charge, charge the mountain. Uh, but that being said, the new CCNA, the material, um, so, so I've got the official answer, will probably be out by the first of the year. So just call it your, your New Year's celebration, January 1st, 2020. Woo-hoo. Um, but, uh, the, we're talking, we're actually in some serious talks right now about releasing what I've recorded so far, along with Keith Parker, he's recording it with me. Uh, releasing that stuff as we record it. Um, there's actually probably, I'd say about, uh, half of the course is already recorded, so people could get started studying that stuff. Um, so there's, there's discussion on that. I don't know if it's gonna happen. Uh, there's, there's just so much change that's happening over there. Um, and then go from there. So... I'm thinking that, uh, let's see, so plan, so yeah, so that's the answer to the planned date. Um, so, that being said, I'm ready to get started. Let's, let's do it. So here's what I did, and just so you can see the format, this is what we were doing, uh, in the last, the last, um, session, is we literally pulled up the practice exam, and this, I, who, who mentioned, I can't remember. Somebody mentioned that they were taking ICND1 tomorrow. Uh, this is gonna be super valuable for you. So we're literally going through question by question. We don't see the answers. You, you, we just kind of, you know, what do you think? And everybody chats in what they think. I talk a little bit about it, and then we answer and move forward. Uh, so, that's where we left off. And this is it. So, so let's start off with question number nine. It says, "Oh, actually, we did this one last time." So I guess we'll do it again. I just didn't save, or I didn't answer it, or something. So which of the following represent valid ranges of access list numbers on a Cisco router for IP extended access lists? What do you think? Chat in what you think the answer could and should be. I should, um, I'm gonna boot up some routers while we're waiting to answer that. And I need a console cable. Should've thought of that. So keep chatting in your answers. I've got, here, I'll just move this over. This'll be good. I'm over here doing surgery, if you, uh, if you didn't know. Um, so, so what I'm doing is I'm actually, I just powered on all this equipment. I'm connecting my computer in here, because I can't find my console cable. I just moved. I'm, I'm in a new house, woo-hoo! Um, so, so I've, I've lost most everything I own. Um, so I just connected a network cable into that switch. It's powering on now. So that way we can, we can actually do some show commands when it's all said and done. Um, okay, so, back to the question. Which of the following represents IP access lists? And the answer, which most, most everybody has keyed in on, is B and A. Uh, who got that? Bit, Bibit, Bibidio. Um, B and A, and I know, this is so dumb. I hate questions like this, because you'd be on a router, you'd be hitting the question mark, and you would see that there is actually an expanded range of extended access lists. Right, like, hang on, let's check the answer. Yeah, right there. So right, uh, 100 through 199 and 2000 through 2699 are the ranges of extended access lists. Um, so it is actually both of them, right? I've never seen somebody exhaust that many of them, but just in case you do, you actually have an extra 700 or so, uh, sitting up there waiting for you. Okay. So, next question. Ooh, this looks fun. "A packet is received with a destination IP address of 10.2.16.10. What would the next hop IP address be for this packet?" What do you think? So you got the show IP route output. I've got my answer. What do you guys think? Actually gonna get my, um, my marker going at the same time. Let's grab this. This is good, good, good. I love, I love that there's a lot of answers coming in, because this is such a, such a good and relevant topic. So, so let's just, I'm just gonna draw a diagram while we're here. So this would be a router. This is, we'll just call, we'll call it router, because we're creative today. And it's got connections, uh, looks like, and so I'm just looking at the routing table. So it's got a serial 0/0 interface going somewhere. It's got a serial 0/1 interface going somewhere. And it's got, looks like, um, another one, serial 1/0. I'm just looking right there, 01. They're all, they're all going somewhere, right? And so, so let's just say, let's just, I'll just draw up a mystery network that showed up just now. Um, fast ethernet 0/0 is connected right here. Um, oh, am I going off the screen? Nope, not yet. So you got a, a little happy computer up here, um, and it sends a packet in, and it's saying, "I'm trying to reach 10.2.16.10," my hand's covering it, "16.10." What's the router do with that? So, so first off, you can see that, hey, bing, got a match. 10.0.0.0/8 should go to 192.168.1.10, but, err, don't go so fast. Look right here, it goes, okay, 10.1, okay, eh, not a match, because this is 10.2. So that one's ruled out right there. Nope, nope. 10.2, ooh, look at that, 10.2.16.0 also goes right here. So, so it's saying, I could, I could get there by going to this. So, so now we've got a conflict, two potential, and I, and I think that's it. Nope, uh, 10.2.32.0, nope, that, so we're 16. So nope, that's out. So we've got two possible routes, and the answer, and I, and I see a lot of people leaning this way, is actually going to be D, um, which is, is that it? Yeah, right there, D. Uh, the reason why is because the number one rule of routing is the rule of specificity. If you've never said that word before, now's your time. It's a great word, specificity. Um, so, above anything, and I, and I'm talking about anything, like metric, administrative distance, anything, is always the more specific the route is. You could have a route being learned by the RIP routing protocol, the worst routing protocol on the planet, compared to a route that's static, like the best possible route that's in there. But if the route learned via RIP is more specific than the static route that you put in, RIP wins. And most people don't catch that. Most people are like, "Oh, administrative distance, oh, metric, blah, blah, blah." No, no, no. Rule of specificity always, always wins. So... Scuttlebacks, and so I wanna make sure, uh, Casaba is saying that that's it, number one. Scuttlebutts, is it because it's a higher prefix? No, it's because this, right here, is a more specific route. Look at that subnet mask, it's a, that, and by the way, if, if you didn't catch that, that's what, what governs the specificity. The slash 8, not speci-, I mean, imagine this, what, what, by the way, what is this? If you've got a route in the table that says 0/0/0/0 goes out, let's just say serial 0/0, right? What, what is that route? Somebody chat it in. What, what would that route be used for? Yep, you got it, Chris. Gateway of Last Resort. This is your default route, right? So, so technically, technically, that matches everything, right? Everything matches that. Now why, why doesn't, like, why, at that point, I just say, ignore the whole routing table, right? You, you gotta, you gotta route that matches everything. Well, the reason this doesn't win every single time is it's the least specific. And, and Chris, you said it just right. Um, you said it just right. It is the, say, like, I want you all to scream that. It is the last resort, right? Meaning it's gonna try everything else in the routing table first, and then use that as the gateway of last resort. And I wanna make sure you catch why. The reason is not because we literally type it in, it's like, this is my gateway of last resort. The only reason it's a last resort is because it's so inspecific. It is the least specific route that's there. So, slash 24 always wins. So, so comparing these two, slash 24 is more specific, right? We good with that? I, I spend so much time there, just because it is, it's a big deal. That's a really big deal when it comes to routing. So, D, let's check our answer. Bing. Da-da-da-da. Since this routing table is the most specific match for the, for the remote network. Good. Hey, look at that, they got a diagram and everything. These practice tests are so good. By the way, if, if you're using this on the CBT Nuggets website, just put it in learn mode, and you will learn so much, because these explanations are really good, really good. Um, oh, look at that. We've got one that's already done for us. You have a router that's not syncing time with the time source. Well, it's given us the answer, uh, which is not a potential, okay, I'm just gonna skip that one, because for some reason it's done. Next. Okay. "Which 2950 switch command or set of commands would be used to create a VLAN named Marketing with VLAN number 25?" What do you think? Chat it in. Good. Man, you guys are on it. Good. Yep, right there. Bing. C is the, is the right answer. Um, A might have worked if, um, if you look at A, uh, if you were in global config mode. It's not an interface config mode command. Um, but, uh, but definitely C. So let's, let's check our answer. Actually, and you know what? It's funny, because I, I see Scuttlebutts saying, C and A. A, A might work, because a lot of times Cisco iOS will recognize you're in the wrong mode and actually back you out. Uh, but I think C is gonna be the only, yeah, there we go. C is gonna be the only one it takes. Yep. Add it in there. Cool. Next. "You are a network administrator, and you're configuring an access list to permit HTTP traffic based on the source and destination address of the devices. Which ACL protocol and port number would you be configuring to permit HTTP traffic?" Ooh, they tell us how many. Choose three. What do you think? Yep, F, we know F, extended access list, because a standard access list only allows us to filter based on source, right? Um... D, why D? Because HTTP is a TCP-based protocol. And, I think you guys all chimed in on that, probably the most well-known port number in the world. 80 is HTTP. If you wanted HTTPS, you're at 443. But that combination, let me just turn my marker off and go A, D, F. Check. Clear that off. Good. We are good. Good, 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 good. Good, this is good. You guys are doing good so far. I wanna, who, who said, somebody just typed in me, someone, someone that said, "I'm, I'm taking my ICND1 tomorrow, and I'm feeling really nervous." Are you, are you looking at this and you're like, "Yeah, I'm feeling good"? Like, I, I really, like, that, I'm like, oh, my heart goes out to you. Like, I, I know, um... There you go, Scuttlebutts. Uh, we're crushing this, we should, we should all go take it. Yeah, let's, let's do it together. Cool. How about this one? "Which type of IP address is a registered IP address assigned by the ISP and represents one or more inside local IP addresses externally?" Ooh, that's a, that's a tricky one. Just for the record, I hate this question. You might be thinking, "Why do you hate this?" So, so first off, uh, first off, why do you hate this question? Because it's, this is Cisco's way of describing NAT, inside, outside, local, and global. Um, which, which, it's right. When you're configuring it, you refer to these, but it's, it's kind of a Cisco-esque way of doing it. Um, and just, it makes it unnecessarily complex. So, so big picture. Um, if I, and there's, there's no way, what, what they're trying to do is describe a router from many different perspectives. So it's kind of like, okay, you can do NAT to where you're looking from the outside in, and you could also do NAT to where you're looking from the inside out, and you could do NAT where you're looking from the inside back to the inside, even though you think you're going outside. So there, these terms are used to describe all the different, um, perspectives that you could use. Um, in a nutshell, inside global address, which I know, sounds like, what? The, the way, the way that I, because it's like inside, that seems like, that seems like private, right? The way I, I tell people to think about it is, when I think of inside versus outside, I think of, who owns it? If it's me that owns it, meaning like, like, I'm using it, that's mine, that's, that's, that's my IP address, you can't take it. You know, like, then, then it's an inside. If somebody else owns it, then it's an outside, right? But, uh, the, the local versus global, that's where I usually say, for the most part, and this is a broad generalization, but most of the time it's accurate, it's, uh, private versus public. So when you see inside global, you can think, okay, it's my public IP address. That's, that's the way. So, so in outside global, which I know a lot of other people are like, hey, hey. Well, outside global is typically someone else's public IP addresses. So if you were to draw it on a diagram, like, here's, here's our router connecting to the internet. You know, there's, uh, let's just say Twitch, right, the, the web server. It would have an outside global IP address. I would have an inside global IP address. And my computer on the private network would have an inside local IP address, right? I own it, it's private. That's right there. The, the one that throws everybody else, everybody off, is this outside local IP address, which is just stupid, in my opinion. I hate that term. Uh, but what it is, it's where you actually use, you can actually set up NAT in a way to where you have a private IP address that somebody accesses, that it translates it out to the outside world. And that's, that's where you use those. So, hopefully that helps. Uh, and by the way, I know a lot of people have always wondered, "Is this recorded?" Yeah, um, actually, that's, that's one of the reasons I use Twitch, is because it automatically records it, and afterwards you can watch it. Um, and one of the things I'm, I'm planning to do, I think I'm planning to do, I don't know if I'm planning to do this, is to take all these recordings and just make it be a stream. So somebody that could, could, like, just have it like a, a television station, because I, I think you can do that on Twitch, and just, for people studying for ICND, they're just like, hey, let's just turn it on and just listen and learn and all that kind of stuff. That's, that's, that's one of, one of what I hope will happen after all this. So, let's answer the question. Everybody's like, "Answer the question!" Okay. Inside global address. You can see, registered IP address assigned by the ISP that represents internal, even though phrasing of that, that represents internal local IP addresses externally. Essentially what it's saying is, when we do NAT, we take all of our private addresses and overload them to a single public address, right? We, we do translation. So, so that single public address is representing all those private ones. I, if you haven't guessed, I hate word games, because I like, I like clear, simple explanations. So hang on, I'm gonna stop right there, because I wanna take some questions. If you have any questions, chat them in, uh, over in the chat, which is what I'm staring at right now. So, Scuttlebutts, they're both external IP addresses from an ISP, that, and you are right, um, yes, yes. Um, so when, uh, so outside and inside global addresses are public addresses? I mean, I guess technically you could go, you, well, you could have gone to Aaron um, and bought your own, to where I own that IP addresses, but yes, in, in, in most cases, the ISP is the one who hands them both. Uh, "Do I have Discord?" I, I don't, I don't. Um, I don't know what Discord is. So, so, CBT Nuggets, a couple months ago, was like, "Everybody go social!", and I'm like, okay. So I kinda walked out, and I'm, I'm like, "Oh, look at this, there's this thing called Facebook." And yeah, I'm, I know, right? So, uh, Scuttlebutts, would it be both A and C since they're both IPs from the ISP? Actually, that's a great question. "Which type of IP address is registered and represents one or more inside local?" Okay, well, so that's, that's the trick. Um, right there, that's how they would get you. So, so yes, technically, both this and this are from an ISP, um, and could represent one or more inside local addresses externally. Um, but I think where they get you is, is if it's outside global, um, then it's somebody else's, you know. Are they using it to represent addresses? I don't know, you know, I can't say. So, so that's, it's kind of, that's what, it's, it's, that's, I told you, I hate this question. It's, it's tricky. Um, so... Ah, I see, because, okay, now, oh, I should've just kept reading. "So are you keeping VODs of these streams up?" Yes, I am. Um, as long as Twitch is keeping them. Twitch automatically deletes them after a certain amount of days, but I'm downloading them. I'm planning to throw them on something. I, I'm hoping to put them back on Twitch to where they just stay there. I think I can do that, I just haven't figured it out yet. Uh, loving these two. Oh, hey, Network Chuck! Network Chuck is joining us too. Um, that's, that's, uh, that's fun. You know, Chuck, so much I could say right now, I'm, I'm not gonna do it. Uh, Chuck, Chuck, everybody say, "Hey Chuck!", everybody chat it in there. Um, so, Old Man Splash, "I plan to get my ICND in seven weeks, CCNA seven weeks after that, hours per day studying, possible." Look at that, Chuck, I'm so sorry. One person, one person said, "Hey Chuck", but, um, there we go. Thank, thank, there, there we go. Show the man some love. Um, so, um, Old Man Splash. So hang on, I'm gonna do this. Look at this. So he's saying, "I'm, I'm gonna get my ICND1 in seven weeks." Yes, that'll be my, you know, we'll just call that our, uh, test date, right, test. Um, and then go seven weeks more and go for ICND2? Um, yes, I think that, so first off, totally possible. Um, but I would actually, what would I do? What would I do? The, the only reason I'm like, ah, ah, is like, you're landing in February, and chances are good. I'm not saying anybody's gonna miss an exam, but it's happened. I, I've missed exams. I failed so many exams, I can't tell you. Uh, it just, it happens. There's so much mental stress that goes into taking an exam that knowing the information is almost secondary to, to, to getting in there. So, so the only reason I, I'm scared when you're like, "My plan is this", is because you're like, right up against that date to where, if you miss it, like, I, I, just me, I would just hate to see you put in a ton of effort, miss it, and then, boom, the exam's gone. You know, and you're like, ah, like, I'd rather you say, "I'm gonna do six weeks for each one", or maybe seven weeks for the first and six weeks for the second, so that you give yourself a little, a little leeway time. There we go, check. You got it, you got a proper, uh, Chuck, you got a proper, uh, welcome there. Um, taking, okay, cool, 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 that's helpful. Good, that you've taken Cisco classes. Okay. So, yeah, okay, cool. Let's, um, let's do this. Back to the questions. Next up. "Which network address translation term, NAT term, is used for the IP address that is assigned to the host on the inside?" Hey, I kind of answered this one. Let's see if you all get it. I need a music stream. Putting that on my list of stuff to figure out. Figure... Music stream. Good. You got it. Yeah, totally. Everybody, I think, I think with that explanation, um, that you got it. It is, so, "What NAT term is used for the IP address assigned to the host on the inside network?" And the answer is that guy, inside local. And again, I'll draw a flyby of the diagram. You know, here's, here's the server on the internet, that is going to be the outside global. The IP address assigned to your router that's public is inside global. The IP address on the inside, or the private IP address assigned to the computer, those are all inside local addresses. It's private, and I own it. It's my, my stuff. So, let's check that guy. Check our answer. Bam! Woo-hoo! Doesn't that make you feel good? We should take the test example. Ooh, all in favor of taking the test together? Aye, I'm, I'm right there with you. That'd be fun. Next. Actually, we're kinda doing that. "Which of the following features is used with the ipnat inside command to translate multiple devices on the inside network to the single IP address in the outside pool?" You guys are getting it. Man, it's like, it's, it's, uh, it's NAT day. NAT day. Um, oh, I should keep that up there for those of you who are still looking at it. So, so first off, static translation, one-to-one. So you've got, here's your route, ah, not that. So we got your router. Good grief. There's your server that you're hosting. So a static translation is always one-to-one, to where you've got a public IP address, something hits it, and it translates it right into that inside address. Dynamic is when you're going from a, uh, a pool to a pool typically. You've got a whole bunch of servers, let's just say, that, let's just say 10 servers here, and you've got 10 public IPs, and you're just kinda going, hey, let's go dynamic, and let them get that pool of addresses as they, as they go in and out. Um, it's also used for kind of address overlapping... It's also used for kind of address overlapping, kind of weird stuff there. Overload is where you take one public IP address, or I should say, one or more, and allow it to be shared amongst many internal clients. Now, a lot of organizations, one of them will work. But as you get bigger and bigger and bigger, like, for instance, hang on, check this out. I'm gonna clear this off, open up a command prompt. This is my one computer, me, myself and I, netstat. And I forgot about the name resolution. So my one computer, once it starts showing all the things I'm connected to right here, it's just doing DNS, which takes forever, can eat up, you know, 100, 200, 500 port numbers in a matter of seconds, especially if you've got a technical person who plays with stuff like me. So you can, you can exhaust the number of ports, which is how dynamic translation, how overloading works, really quick if you have a whole bunch of users inside that are doing a whole bunch of surfing, right? So that's where we do a pool of outside addresses. And once all the ports run out on one of them, it starts cycling down. So back to the question, the answer is overload. Check, check, check. Good. That's it, you're hacking into my network. Cool. Next up. "Which of the following topologies is used in wide area networks?" Token ring. Gotta be B. Which of these, which do you, do you think is used in wide area networks? We have much thought on this one. Think about it, chat it in. Answer, I think, SONNET. Good. My only reason for asking is I've never heard of CDDI. I'm like, if that's a new WAN type that I don't know about, then, then that could be the answer too. But SONNET is, is a fiber optic cable laid that goes miles and miles and miles and miles, right? So you, so standard, there you go. Fiber optic networks developed in 1980. SONNET can transmit 2.5 gigabits per second. It actually goes faster than that nowadays. And, and can go, it's, it's what typically runs metropolitan area networks. Question, is that on the ICND1 SONNET? So this kind of question, yeah. You, you would actually stumble into SONNET, just not, not by configuration, but by definition. You should know what, what SONNET, SONNET cabling is. Good. Question 18, oh, let's see how this goes. Teslet. So let's see, click on the exhibit. So let's look at our exhibit. Okay, so we've got a network. "You have just been informed that the DNS server has crashed." Sweet. "What will be the effect on the network?" So, what do you think? Chat, chat those in, see if you can, so DNS server has crashed. "What will be the impact?" Some of these are fun answers. Mick, 16 hours from now. You got it, buddy. Good, 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 you're gonna do great. Peace out, Chuck. Answer on this one will be D. Looks like most of you got it. Fun, fun discussion. This would be the case if the router went down. Then they would only be able to communicate with hosts on their own subnet. This would be the case if DHCP went down. You know, problems would be, it's because, once their lease ran out, the IP address would be lost and it wouldn't get a new one. So that's where, and this, this is just wrong. So let's check our answer, D, good. Yeah, by the way, a lot of people think the whole network's down, the whole internet's down. You know, people, "Ah, the internet's down because everybody uses names, twitch.com, twitch.tv instead of, you know, typing in the IP address." So DNS is a big deal. I actually was just working with the Salt River Project, which is an electric company here. They actually have, they put in boxes, appliances in their network, $20,000 apiece. The only thing it does is DNS, two of them. So $40,000, two boxes, just does DNS. That's the, and I asked him, I'm like, "Are you serious? Like, you're really doing that?" He's like, "Dude, DNS goes down, that's the whole network." I'm like, "Fair, fair. Don't want to take down the electric company." So, next up. "Which of the following statements are true?" Oh, jeez, it's, it's 335. So let's, this will be our last one. And we'll go from there. "Which of the following is true about trunk ports?" Ooh, back in the VLAN world. What do you think? Read those, read those answers, chat in your question. Chat in, chat in your answer. You got it? Uh-huh. Let's talk it through. I'll work from the bottom up. "Trunk port supports a single VLAN." Trunk port, which, which other vendors called tag ports, right? Is where you extend VLANs past your one switch. So the whole purpose of a trunk port is to carry multiple VLANs across between multiple switches, right? Here's our little three-port switches. So nope, trunk port uses straight-through ethernet cable? It could, but because nowadays we use, what is it? Auto MDIX, which kind of obsoles crossover cables, but that's not, not at all related to a trunk port. "Connects an unused workstation." Nope, that would be an access port. So the only one left is that guy, which, turn off my marker, check it. We're good. Cool. Cool, 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 good. Well, guys, I, I, I plan on these sessions just being 30 minutes. I'm gonna do the same thing tomorrow. We'll just, we'll pick up on question 20 and just keep trekking through. I'll make the recordings available and, and we can go from there. I'll hang out for, totally a trick question! I'll hang out for a couple of minutes afterwards chatting into the chat with you guys. And then I am off to a soccer game of my daughters. So I will, I'll see you soon. I hope this has been informative for you. I'd like to thank you for viewing.